Good evening and welcome to the Monday, November 14th, 2016 Board of Education meeting. Mr. Bloss and Mrs. Cohen could not be here tonight, so I will chair the meeting. We begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and would you all join me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item two, item three is to act on the minutes of October 11th, 2016, the regular Board of Ed meeting. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any comments, corrections? No? Then I call for a vote. All those in favor of accepting the minutes of October 11th, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained, I wasn't here.
Thank you. Next is the 3.2, the minutes of the October 24th, 2016 workshop meeting. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. I have one correction. Actually, I was present. Does anybody else have any comments or corrections? Call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passed. 3.3, special meeting, October 26th. Attending that meeting was myself, Mr. Sands, and Mrs. Cohen. Mr. Sands, if you want to move to accept the minutes?
I would move that we accept the minutes of that meeting.
And I will second it. All those in favor? Aye. Item four is public forum for topics on the board agenda. Is there anybody who wishes to comment? Good. Thank you. Item five is to review and approve the expenditures for the month of October, 2016. Mrs. Cohen was the reviewer, but Mr. Sands is substituting for her. Ted?
Thank you. It was a good month. The expenditures for the month of October were $4,933,814.36. Through the end of October, we have expenditures and encumbrances of 27.66 percent of budget, which compares to last year at this point, we were at 28.14 percent. So we're in reasonable shape here. I would comment that October was a two payroll month. The warrants for the month totaled $2,375,708.11. We discussed the specifics of the financials at some length in the operations meeting, but I would be happy to answer any questions to the extent I could relating to the financials.
Anybody have any questions?
No additional questions that weren't addressed in the operations.
Okay. Is there a motion?
There are no questions. I would move that the October financial report be accepted.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I recuse myself. Item six are communications. Does anybody have any communications from the community or elsewhere? Nope. I wonder whether, Dr. Freeman, this might be a good point to discuss how Veterans Day went. Of course, that's a new, do you want to discuss that in your report?
I actually wanted to let the student reps get through their reports. I have a suspicion that there might be some information coming from our reps, and I'd be happy to fill in anything if I don't hear it presented by our student reps.
Sounds like a plan. Next item, number seven, student reps. It's nice to see these two bright-eyed young men and women here. The floor is yours.
My name is Danielle Lott, and I'm a senior at Guilford High School. And today I'll be talking about Calvin Leit and A.W. Cox and Guilford Lakes. So addressing the Veterans Day, that was a pretty big thing in the schools. At Calvin Leit, all the students walked to the Guilford Green to participate in the Veterans Day ceremony, and there they led the Pledge of Allegiance and also saying, "Your grand old flag and my country tis of thee." The veterans and community members who attended said that they were truly moved by the Calvin Leit students attending the ceremony and that they really enjoyed being there. After they returned to the school, they discussed the importance of Veterans Day, and one third grader even said, "It made me think about those who have risked their lives to protect our country and our freedom, and very thankful for those people." And so I think that was quite a wonderful opportunity for those students. And then at Cox, they also celebrated with, I think, 20 veterans at the school discussing their experiences, and they've also started a gratitude wall inspired by the Look for the Good project, and they're asking people to send sticky notes or index cards to help contribute to this wall. And then at Guilford Lakes, they're participating in the food drive. They'll be collecting non-perishable food items from November 7th to November 18th. They also had their Lions Pride Assembly, in which Mrs. Vail's students talked about responsibility. And then they also celebrated the Day of the Dead in Spanish class. So they've been studying cultural celebrations, and it's all been part of the National Spanish Heritage Month. And Halloween, they wore orange and black to celebrate that.
All right. My name is Brendan Ballestraci, and I'm a junior at Guilford High School. And I'll be reporting on Melissa Jones at Adams Middle School and Baldwin Middle School. For Melissa Jones, everyone who's in school for Veterans Day. Family and friends were invited to join me on a Veterans Day program where over 40 veterans attended. They sang songs, they read poems, and the students presented them with cards and posters thanking them for their service. At Baldwin Middle School, they had a fantastic Veterans Day. A few weeks prior to Veterans Day, the teachers asked that the students had an at-home activity where they discussed family members and friends that knew of veterans and were friends with them and talked about their experiences. On staff, on Veterans Day, they recognized staff members and visiting veterans that had all served, and they sang the Star Spangled Banner, led by the chorus and the Pledge of Allegiance with a moment of silence. For Adams Middle School, they had a fun Halloween dance sponsored by the National Junior Honor Society, and all the canned goods that they collected and the ticket sales from the dance were all donated to the Guilford Food Pantry. We also, at Adams Middle School, all Adams students took a behavior and attitude survey, which the data from that survey will go to the Guilford Day program to sponsor appropriate, substance-free activities for the Guilford youth. And the Adams Middle School Student Council sponsored an outstanding program for the Veterans Day and veterans and active servicewomen on Friday. 29 veterans were at attendance, and they were all treated to breakfast, and they talked with all of the student council and many of the students on Veterans Day.
And at the high school, we celebrated Veterans Day by having some veterans here in the library, and during our history classes, we got to come in and see them. So I was fortunate enough to come in and see them at the end of the day, and it was really nice. They kept it open to discussion, students got to ask questions, and it was interactive, and you got to know what you really wanted to, so that was pretty nice, especially since for the seniors, if they're looking into going into the armed forces. It was a really great opportunity. And also, dress code committee. We have another meeting coming up, but at our last meeting, we all weighed in on the language and dress trends that we see in the school, and we've been kind of looking at it and seeing if we can make it more positive. And Mr. Masenti actually gave us a homework assignment, so we've been looking at dress code for a school in Oregon, I think. And he also sent out a Google Doc that allows us to actively change the wording and kind of have that open discussion with the group. Our visit from the IB, they spent two full days here, and we got some really great positive feedback from them. And then the visit will be reviewed in Bethesda, New York, and then it'll go to Geneva, Switzerland. And then Mr. Masenti will get a letter from Geneva, and they'll be talking about whether or not they've approved our school. So that's a pretty big deal. And then we had homecoming last weekend, and there were 400 students, and there have been no drug or alcohol incidents at homecoming in a few years, so it's pretty good. And Unity is coming up on Wednesday, the 16th, and that'll continue into the following week. It'll be a five-day event, and we'll be dressing according to a certain theme for each day, and then at the end, we'll have a big pep rally.
And in other news from Guilford High School, the play All in the Timing was recently performed this Friday and Saturday, and I went to see it, it was very successful and it was very funny. This year, we also sent 58 musicians from our bands and orchestras to CMEA, which in three years, we've broken the record from the previous year every single time, which is amazing. And our soccer team, our boys' soccer team, is now in the semifinals after winning in extended time against, I think, North Haven, and now they'll be facing Hand to see who goes into the finals. Also, this week, on Wednesday and Thursday, parent-teacher conferences will be held so that the parents can get to really know the teachers and how their students are doing in the classes. The CIAC robotics competition this year will hopefully be held at Guilford High School. We're just waiting for some approval from the committee to see if we meet all the specifications required to hold a competition like that. And I think that wraps up about everything from Guilford High School.
Great.
Thank you.
I understand that there were musicians from Guilford High School on the Green who played taps at the ceremony, which is great.
So if I can ask, do you feel that being in school on Veterans Day was a better way to recognize the holiday than, I mean, it's the first time ever that you've done that here?
Definitely. I found it was a great opportunity to have that open conversation for kids who don't have any veterans at home, to be able to show their appreciation and ask the questions and, yeah, what did you think?
Yeah, I think it really gives a good viewpoint for some of the kids that, as she said, don't have family members or friends that are veterans, because a lot of students at Guilford High School do. And to get other students' perspective, as well as the veterans that were in attendance on Veterans Day at the high school, I think it was really important for them.
Okay, thank you. That's great. Dr. Freeman, anything to add to this?
Yeah, I would just add that actually around 6:00 PM this evening, the Guilford Public Schools website broadcast links to a photo album from the activities that took place on Veterans Day, as well as an overview of some of the activities that you heard the students highlight. You know, the only thing I'd add is that through the weekend and through the day today, principals who hosted the activities and I have been receiving emails talking about how exciting the day was, how positive it was. We're hearing from veterans who were invited in and from parents of students in the schools about how much they appreciated the day. So I do know that the veterans' community appreciated this activity and the way that it was scheduled, and I do know that the parents we've been hearing from viewed it as a positive as well. I would just like to thank the principals and the many, many teachers and the many volunteers from around our community who made this possible. It wouldn't have been the day that we heard described if it weren't for a lot of work on the part of the staffs in each of the schools and our Guilford community members who came into the schools to share their experiences to make it a really positive experience. We were very, very happy with it. You will see it recommended in the drafted calendar that we present to you tonight for next school year.
Excellent. And I think we should also thank Mr. Gammerman and Mr. Ballestraci, both of whom are veterans who urged us to change our policy and have school on that day. And they were very forceful, and we appreciate it.
And joined me as we met with different veterans groups around the community to explain why and how we wanted to see this happen. I think that the veterans in the community felt very much part of the conversation and decision, as well as part of the day that we hosted here on Friday.
That's great.
The rest of my report is fairly brief. I do want to update the community, as well as the board, that we are well into the thick of budget season. Yeah, you guys don't have to listen to me, it's okay to come. We are now well into the thick of budget season. At this time, the Board of Ed has hosted two public conversations around the topic of budget, one with our leadership team, followed by an open public hearing. We had more parents, more community members in attendance at our public hearing than we've had in some years. It was exciting to see that people are engaged in the process. At this time, all department heads and principals have submitted their budgets to the business office. Mrs. Trudeau is in the process of compiling all of those draft budgets. She and Mr. Bowden and I will begin meeting with all of those department heads and principals in the very first days of December to begin going through that complete compiled agenda, or budget, rather. Ms. Bowden and I have had first initial meetings with Mr. Gurnham. We have reviewed the 10-year capital calendar that we put together some years ago after we brought in an outside evaluator. We have begun working on capital presentations that will accompany our operational budget presentation. We expect to have all of that completed, and we'll be ready to begin discussing the draft budget with all of you as we move into December and January, but we're well into the thick of budget season. We do have some budget information that we will be releasing to the website in very short order, and I want to thank both Dr. Moore for the question and Dr. Myers for the suggestion. But we've taken some performance and expenditure slides that I have been sharing individually with small groups around the community and created about a nine-minute video that gives context and presents all of that information, and that will be launched to our website in the next few days. I would encourage community members to take a look at that as we begin thinking about this year's budget season.
Are the slides, just the individual slides, available?
Yes, I can make those available.
That'd be great, because I think, I mean, some people won't watch.
Yep.
Nine minutes.
Come on, nine minutes is really brief. I can't do much less than nine minutes.
Just to be able to refer to the slides, like, you know, those are the key things.
Yep.
It's a good video.
We can make those available.
Yeah, as I watch it, it's a very good video.
And the only other item I have to bring to your attention is a letter in your packet. I did approve an overnight field trip. The field trip took place this weekend. It involved high school female cross-country runners participating in the New England Championships, but I'm required by policy to notify you, so although I approved it, we certainly did not want the girls to miss that opportunity, but I'm notifying you of that opportunity here this evening.
Post hoc, proctor hoc.
I'm sorry.
What? It's been done. And you told us. Lawyer talk. Gotcha. Gotcha.
I'm trying to think.
I'll be quiet.
And I believe that's less than nine minutes. That completes my report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Freeman. Item nine, 9.1, act on a personnel item, which is a resignation by Cindy Chen from Guilford Elementary School. Is there a motion to approve the resignation?
So moved. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 9.2 is to act on snow removal bid for Guilford High School. Mrs. Renner, we discussed this in the operations committee, do you want to?
We did. Sure, I'd be happy to. The snow removal here at Guilford High School has been done by an outside service, not by our staff, and we're required by our own policy to go out for bid on something like this. So the staff advertised this item for bid and ultimately received three formal bids from Winthrop Construction, Landmark Services, and Cherry Hill Construction. The low bidder was Landmark Services. It's interesting, I like the way the bid was done. Depending on the amount of snow, each bidder submitted a bid for that particular band of snow. And Landmark Services came out lowest in all categories, including the 12 inches of snow and up. Not that that's going to happen, but in all cases, they were the low bidder. And Mr. Gurnham, the director of facilities, carefully vetted this organization, Landmark Services. He checked their references, he physically walked the property with them, and he is very comfortable that they'll be able to meet the requirements in a satisfactory way. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Landmark Services bid for snow removal at Guilford High School for this winter.
Is there a second? Thank you. They were also a local Guilford firm.
That's true.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 9.3, act on plans, specifications, and an estimate dated November 1, 2016 for bidding on the replacement of windows on the Baldwin Middle School building, including the filing of the SCG-042 state form. Is there a motion to approve those plans?
So moved. Second.
Again, Mrs. Renner, we discussed this in the operation committee?
We did, yes. We've been talking about the Baldwin doors and windows, actually, for a very long time. The doors and windows are, for the most part, original to that school, which was placed in service in the late '60s or around 1970. So a couple of years ago, I think it was two years ago, the voters in town approved spending approximately $1.9 million to replace the windows and doors. It's an energy project and also a security project. Later, it was determined that there was a problem with PCB materials in some of the windows and doors that were going to be removed, and that's a hazardous situation and has to be handled a certain way. And as a result, the timeframe of the project was extended, and the total cost is going to be more than the amount that we originally proposed in the past. So the information that was provided to us came from the architect, and they're expecting the project, they're expecting to go out to bid, to have bids in about a month, and to be able to start the work this coming summer. The project is so large that depending on what contractor is ultimately chosen, the work might be done in one summer, but it might be done partly in this coming summer and partly in the next summer, so as not to disrupt the learning in the school. So the documents that we are approving are technical documents with specifications. They have been carefully reviewed by the Standing Building Committee and also the building officials in town, the fire marshal, the health department, et cetera. We're comfortable with all the work. I'm comfortable with all the work that was done by all those parties on these plans.
So is that a motion to approve?
Yes, it is.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye. Perse. Negative. Motion passes.
Thank you. 9.4 is to receive the 2017-2018 school calendar, which is a draft, and we've received that in our packets. Does anybody have any questions, comments?
Oh, I do. I don't see Veterans Day as a Saturday.
Yes.
Which obviously is why we are not in school on Veterans Day. But I thought you said that we'd see that in our...
We would plan for similar recognitions to happen on the 10th.
On the 10th, okay.
We would normally have taken the 10th off to recognize the holiday.
Got it, okay.
We will hold similar recognitions on the 10th.
Sure. Good.
Any other questions about the calendar?
I would also just note that the calendar does fall in alignment with the regional calendar. It is a requirement now that our calendar fall within alignment to that template. I'd also note that we have returned to three professional development days before the first day of school. I would note the long weekend in February, but we have not returned to a February break. I would also note that both the December and April breaks, because we are in alignment with the regional calendar, are similar, are the same to all of the other surrounding school districts in our region, and it would provide us with a last day of school barring weather delays or cancellations of June 12th. This is receive-only. We'll post it on our website, and the community will have time to make comments to board members before we ask for your approval.
Yep.
This is just a small, double-checking what I'm seeing, because we did, kind of in a fluke this year, start on a Wednesday, we're back to starting on a Thursday?
This is actual, one small area of deviation. The regional calendars work on essentially a formula where you will start school on the last Wednesday of August.
Okay.
We tried that model this year, and the feedback that we received from teachers and principals is that they appreciate the committed time before school opens for professional development, professional learning opportunities. So there is some small amount of latitude provided to us, so many of our neighbors will be starting on that Wednesday. We would rather have that professional time upfront to front-load the school year, and we'll open on the 31st.
It certainly doesn't matter to me either way. I just know there are a couple of people who have been in the district so long that almost didn't send their kids to school this year on the Wednesday, because they're like, "Don't we always start on Thursday?"
And, right, and that was because we made an effort to strictly follow, and we didn't like it. We prefer having our professional time upfront and front-loading the school year.
Sounds good.
So we'll get back to what they're comfortable with.
Okay. 9.5 is another receive item, and that's the received 2017 Board of Ed meeting calendar.
And that follows the school calendar and mimics the calendars, and again, it's a receive item only this evening?
9.6 is to receive, again, the 2017 Board of Ed Operations Curriculum Instruction and Assessment and Policy Committee calendar.
I'd note the same and only add that if we were to have conversations about changing any of those structures, I think that a retreat that we have suggested at the board level would be the appropriate place to do that, and the board can always change any of these calendars moving forward if we make a substantial change of any kind.
9.7 is to receive for possible action the Guilford Education Association contract. There was a committee that negotiated that, and Mr. Kazin, you were a member, would you like to present the pertinent findings?
Yes, in Chairman Bloss's absence, I'll go through the highlights. So first of all, this was ratified by the Teacher Association on November 2nd. But this year, from the spring through the summer, we had several interactions with representatives of the Guilford Education Association, GEA, including a few pre-negotiation interactions, a negotiation session, but we're ultimately unable to reach an agreement. So we brought this to alternative dispute resolution process of mediation during early October, and that was attended by one member of the Guilford Board of Finance. So the highlights of the agreement, it's a three-year agreement, 2017 through 2020. Our teachers are moving to a high deductible healthcare plan, HDHP. They'll share in the costs of that plan as follows, 17% in the first year, 18% in the second year, 19.5% in the third year. And then any members who are still in the existing PPO and elect to stay in the existing PPO will cover the difference in costs themselves. Also made some minor language changes. We eliminated an article providing additional unearned sick time. Teachers continue to have a sick bank into which they can donate earned sick days. We eliminated language specific to half-day kindergarten positions, having none, it seemed sensible, strike that out. We added language allowing teachers to convert unused temporary leave days into sick days at the end of the year. Most of our staff doesn't have cash-out value. And then we included a language to negotiate the impact of the medical insurance costs should there be an imposition of an excise, sometimes called Cadillac Tax, that impact our costs. And then finally, as to wage increases, first of all, the approximately one-third of our teachers who are at max step, max seniority, receive the following increases. In year one, 1%, year two, 2%, year three, 3.2%. And then for all teachers, including the... And then for all teachers, including the other 2/3s who do have step movement, our total salary increases are, year 1, 3.03%. Year 2, 3.06%. Year 3, 3.4%. For a total wage increases of 9.49% over the three years. So that's a summary of all of the highlights, Mr. Vice Chairman.
So this has been approved by the teachers' union, and it now comes before us for our approval. So Mr. Kason, is that a motion?
I do so move.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to comment a little bit. And I know this is probably said every year, but this year, I think, is worth emphasizing a little bit in that, you know, we did go through a difficult budget season. And these were, I think, tough, tougher negotiations than we've seen. And, you know, I do think that, you know, people will say, "Well, you know, can you really have 3% raises every year when many people are not getting those?" And the discussion really came down to going to arbitration. And I just think the public needs to be aware of that, that, you know, we did talk about trying to, or even considering doing that. But people need to be aware that, you know, if you do that, you have to offer, you have to put an offer on the table, and that can be chosen, either what the teachers offer or what the board offers. And statewide, I think the lowest increase that's been approved at arbitration was maybe just under 9% for...
I think that's correct. And the average, the average agreements are coming in at 9.7% to 10% over three years. But yes, I believe you're right.
And that is, you know, by statute, in Connecticut, the teachers are not allowed to strike, but we're also subject to binding arbitration at the state level. So each year around budget season, we hear, you know, "Why are these, you know, why aren't we at 0%? Why, you know, why can't we not, you know, continue to increase that?" And it just, I think, is something that's, that's worth emphasizing as we, you know, go through this. And the other thing that was brought to my attention as far as arbitration is that it, you know, really is based on the community's ability to pay. And that, you know, we are, I think, as emphasized during the budget presentations and on the, on the website, you know, not on the high end of our per pupil expenditure. We're not over-administered. So I think it's reasonable, you know, to pay our teachers well. I think we can do it. But I just think it's important for people to understand that process. Each year, I mean, we hear about how, you know, "How can it be this much, and how can it not be 0%?" So I just want to put that out there for the public.
Of course, it's also fair to point out that some of the increase in wages is offset by the benefit package, which is a savings, because they have gone from the other older, more comprehensive health insurance to a higher deductible.
Absolutely.
So that's important.
Dr. Myers, if I may, the only thing I'd add is I would like to, for the community's sake, thank the board members and the teachers who participated. It was a more challenging conversation than it has been in the past on the heels of a difficult budget season. But as somebody sitting on the edge of that conversation, I watched a group of teachers and a group of Board of Education members have the difficult conversations to determine what was going to be best for the students in Guilford. I appreciate all the time that the board members who served put in, and I appreciate the time of all the teachers, particularly President Regina Sullivan. And I believe we've come to a fair agreement that is going to continue to serve the students of Guilford by providing them with excellent teachers.
That's a very good point. The bottom line is fairness. So as for a vote, all those in favor of ratification?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? You should point out that there were two other union negotiations that are not concluded yet. One is the administrators, where there is a tentative agreement, and I think it will come before this board next month.
Correct.
And the other is food service, which is, for various reasons, has been delayed and postponed, but hopefully should get underway fairly soon.
And also custodial.
And custodial.
Correct.
So we still have work to do.
We have a few more to finish up.
Yep. Okay, good. Thank you all. 9.8 is to act on recommendations from the Policy Committee. Dr. Balustrace?
Yes. As we know from our last meeting, we, at that time, received a number of transportation policies and regulations that we acted on. There were a couple, however, that the Policy Committee and the administration were interested in reviewing again before bringing before you. We did that at our last televised meeting. And so what I bring before you as receive items and asking the board to act on are the following. Policy 3614, Bus Routes and Services. This policy identifies, kind of, our policies around, again, specifically bus routes, services, maximum walking distances. The changes that we made were in regards to simplifying the language and really making it very clear what were hazardous conditions for kids of various ages and/or grades walking to either school or to bus stops, and what situations were required so that kids could do so safely. The only other thing, minor changes, we did have at the top of Page 1, breakdowns of K through 3 and 4 through 12, which don't represent our particular school structure. So we changed those from K to 4 and 4 through, sorry, 5 through 12. And as you saw through many of the other transportation policies and regulations that we put before you, some simple cleanup language, changing pupil to student. There were, again, there were, there are a number of crossouts here. So if anybody has any questions, I'm more than willing to answer any of those.
Anybody have questions?
I do have one question. It's not important, but where you mentioned that we changed the grades to correspond to our own system here in Guilford. There are, there's also discussion of students at certain ages, 10 years of age or K through 4. Is, do we actually prepare schedules taking into consideration the ages of students? I wonder if that could be removed, or if that's required by law for some reason, to have those ages in there. I don't imagine that's something that we really can. It would be a horrible task to look at actual ages of students. We're looking at school enrollment.
It's a good question. We do not pull individual student sheets to see if they are of an unusual age. We schedule based on grade level. There would be no statutory requirement to schedule based on age. I believe that is holdover from when we initially took recommended language from K. It is redundant, and your question is on target. We don't schedule, we don't pull their birth certificates or records when we schedule. We schedule based on the grade they're in. It would be a simple strikeout if you wanted to approve with that change.
So then the suggestion is on 1A, that we remove below 10 years of age or...
Correct.
And at 1B, we remove between 10 to 17 years of age or...
Correct.
Right.
I think we can take out "in the equivalent of" as well.
Yes.
Right.
Right, enrolled.
In the, in both, in the equivalent of...
The equivalent of, just enrolled in grades.
Thank you.
So it would read, "Students enrolled in the equivalent of grades K..."
No, no. Students enrolled in...
Grades K through 1.
Right, 1 through 4.
Yep.
And students enrolled in grades 5 through 12.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you for that suggestion.
Those changes? Excellent. As for a vote, all those in favor of approving...
Aye.
Have we motioned, sorry?
Yeah, we did.
Oh, we have, I'm sorry.
We did, we have the motion, so...
Yep, mine's wrong.
It has been voted and approved. Next.
3614 is the, now the regulation that accompanies this, bus routes and services. This, the changes here identify that school routes will be available on the website, on the Guilford Public Schools website. They will no longer be sent home by mail. The section talking about late buses has been struck. We have not provided late buses in years, I don't believe. The forms, and I'll be talking about this again in our, in our third request, but forms are available from the transportation coordinator. And I believe that's the only changes we're seeing here. So I make a motion that the board approve these changes.
Circle.
All those in favor of approval of the Regulation 3614A?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Finally, the removal of Regulation 3614 forms. These are the forms that accompany these policy and regs, or have accompanied these policy and reg in the past, much like the other transportation policy and regulations that we have already approved. We have decided that the forms do not belong in a policy book. The forms continue to exist. Chip Dorwin has those there. There are ways to get any of those forms if parents need them. I believe they're on the website as well.
Available on the website in the transportation page.
So, but they, we're feeling pretty confident that those kinds of things just don't belong in the policy books. So the request is to strike those forms from the policy and regulation altogether.
That's a motion.
That is a motion.
One thing I would say about that is that I actually find the, I mean, I guess it's troublesome to update them, but I find it helpful to be able to find the forms in the policy. There's a lot of other forms that are in the policy manual.
That is true. I, I think as we're moving through, as a policy committee is moving through the policy book, as, as various issues come up, either because the state legislature has acted in ways that we have to respond to, or whether we're simply marching through the book, which we've also done at times in, in terms of keeping up with all of them. I hear what you're saying. I think the problem is, though, that what it does is every, every time there's a slight change, we have to go back.
Yeah, I just think it's, it is important that the forms, you know, are easily available, like, you know, on the website or something like that.
Yeah, the community expects them to live in a transportation page. They don't think to look in a policy handbook to find their transportation form.
Yeah, and that's fine. I just would prefer it not to be that they have to, like, contact the office to get them sent.
Oh, no. And I'm sorry, I was, I was, that's, that's correct. And that was my...
They live on the website, in the transportation page.
My prioritization of commenting where they could be gone.
Yeah, all right.
The only question is where on the website they're residing.
There's a transportation page that we've created, and they should be easily, we believe it's much more user-friendly than it has been in the past.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Balustrace. Item 10, Reports of Committees. 10.1 is the Policy Committee. Do you have anything else to add?
Did the striking of the forms get voted on?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, great.
If not, we could revote.
Aye.
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 Okay.
Passes.
I'm having a little trouble with that tonight.
Item 10, anything else, Dr. Balustrace, on the Policy Committee?
Nothing new to report now. We will be looking at, Mr. Bowden has put together a number of policies that we're going to need to look at as we continue to address what the state legislator, legislature has done in the last year.
10.2, Operations Committee.
I think we've covered the high points. I'll also mention, though, that we are closely watching the special education tuition line. Right now, if there are no changes, we will be fine within our budget. But if anything changes, we, there's no fat. We're also relying on a reimbursement from the state. We won't know about that until the spring. We've budgeted for that to be at levels as we've seen in past years, but that's also subject to change, so we're kind of on warning about that.
10.3 is the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee. We did have a meeting two weeks ago?
Was it just two weeks ago?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. Time flies when you have a... And we discussed assessments, feedback, and other issues. It was very informative, and the minutes, I haven't seen the minutes.
But the minutes usually go to the next...
Yeah, they haven't been out yet.
Yeah, go to the full one.
Okay, thank you.
The only thing, I think, that falls into that is the homework, you know, working group, which Gary and I are on, but were both unable to attend last week. There is a survey that went out, and I believe we've had, and said 650 responses so far.
Over 700?
As of tonight, 730.
Wow. I also snuck my way in there.
Yeah, Gary made it to the meeting.
Okay, all right, good. So you can update then.
But that would be, that's a great reminder for the community to know that that survey will be open through the 20th of November. So if they haven't completed the survey, and you can complete a survey for every child that you have. It should be one per child.
We also hosted a public hearing and had a great turnout and a...
That's right, yeah.
A good conversation here in this room on the topic. It really is turning into an exciting community conversation on the topic.
And that is the topic of the next Curriculum and Instruction and Assessment Committee meeting in January. I mean, that's part of it, what it is, the homework review, so that everybody can have some discussion around it before it goes to the Policy Committee.
One minor point, but important for anyone who hasn't completed the survey, the word homework, which is defined in the survey, means any work done at home, not work done in study halls or here at school, but any non-classroom work, including projects and so forth, but only what's done at home.
And are we going to be able to send out some additional reminders on that? Is that possible? I don't know.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think Lori, we'll ask Lori. I think she can send out a reminder to the target audience and remind them if they haven't completed the survey.
Yeah, I just think...
It's always beneficial.
The more responses we get, because, you know, I mean, the interested, yeah, anyway.
Okay. 10.4, Report on Liaison to the Guilford High School Building Committee. Now, that's an item that will soon disappear.
I believe they are approaching their final meeting. And, yes, and they have, I can't say enough that the Guilford High School Building Committee did a spectacular job shepherding this project. School opened on time. The school is everything that we had hoped it would be, and they brought it in under budget. They deserve this community's thanks. They've done a wonderful job, and I won't miss being out every Tuesday evening, but I won't miss working with that group of people.
We should send a letter of gratitude.
I will be thanking each member of the committee, yep.
Good idea. Liaisons to Town Committees?
Nothing to report from lay-in acquisition we passed this month.
This is not really a town committee. It's kind of a Board of Ed School Administration Committee, but the Health and Wellness Committee met last week. One of the things we're tasked with this year is to review our health and wellness policy. There's a new rule that, new state law that now we need to review it every three years. We did do a particularly thorough cleaning and review of that policy in 2000. I think we finally approved it in 2014. So I'm not expecting a whole lot of change this time around, but we are going to be doing that this year. The other thing that we have started doing and will continue to do is put out a newsletter a couple of times a year that will include a number of items, one of which is kind of an interview with a student athlete or even just an active student. It doesn't have to be someone on an official team from various schools. There's usually going to be an article either from our school pediatrician or one of our nursing staff. We've had, I think there was an article last year on various trail systems in Guilford, so we're, we're trying to kind of put together a newsletter that might highlight some of what's going on, but also give people information about ways that they can be active in the community.
Sounds great. Very good. 10.6, Dr. Moore, Liaison to Learn Board of Directors?
Yeah, unfortunately, I was away last week. However, the, in October, I'm not sure I've updated on that yet. It was an interesting presentation. Paul K. Smith, who you may know as Superintendent of East Hampton, and I guess he had actually also come from Griswold, right?
Correct. Most recently of Griswold, that's right.
I was putting the parallels together with the Pauls that were stolen from Griswold. But it was just a really neat presentation of sort of an inclusive process of defining their goals and, you know, outlining them with the community and the school. their goals and, you know, outlining them with the community and the, the school workforce. And the other thing I thought was really good, they had had a lot of trouble with their budgets and he spends a lot of time, I guess, you know, like, each week, he puts out like a superintendent newsletter and they're all on their, their website. And I just thought it was a neat way to communicate. There was a lot, just a lot of positive energy about the involvement of the community, you know, in the, in the budget, in the budget process. They'd had a lot of trouble passing budgets, but passed fairly easily with a, you know, reasonable increase the last year. So I just thought that was a, if anyone wants to, you know, look at that, it's on their website. And it's nice to hear from other districts and just what they're doing and stuff like that, so.
Dr. Myers, before you move on, if I could just make one additional notice for the community, I know that the board members are all aware of this, but I do want to apprise the community that on October 28th, Mr. Vince Augustine, who was the principal at Cox Elementary School, passed away after a prolonged illness. Mr. Augustine was with us at Cox from 2011 through school year 2015. I know that he is going to be sorely missed. There was a very small private service with his family. A few of us were honored to attend. I just want to acknowledge that Vince was an individual who gave his heart and soul to this community, worked very hard for the students at Cox Elementary School and is going to be sorely missed in Guilford.
Thank you. It's too late to get this out to the public, but it has been. Dr. Friedman will be talking at the Guilford Library tomorrow night.
Tomorrow evening.
At 7:30, I believe?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock. About his trip to Jordan, where he was very involved in helping to train Jordanian teachers. And Dr. Moore, welcome back from Egypt, where you were there on an academic research program. So it's nice to see members around this table, traveling far and wide to spread their expertise. So that's nice. Item 11, public questions. Anybody? Talking about welcoming people back, Mrs. Carlson is here after a trip to South America and it's good to see you back and looking refreshed and healthy. Hearing no public questions, item 12, is there a motion to adjourn?
There is. Right here.
Made it, thank you.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So it's clearly Mr. Bloss who does it.